The mess is with me every time.
Welcome to Planning Commission, the March 5th, 2025 meeting. We will start the night off with a prayer from Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Davis will lead us in the pledge.
Our dear Father of heaven, we're grateful that we can all gather this evening for planning and land use meetings. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in our city and to participate and to help with these items. We're grateful for the moisture that thou hast blessed us with, and we pray that we continue to bless our area with moisture that we are in need of. We're grateful for the staff and for all those who worked diligently to help our city and pray that thou would bless them. We pray that would be with each of us as we go throughout items on our agenda, that we can do so in a calm and orderly fashion. And we thank, in this we pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda for the night is the approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion for approval of the agenda.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve tonight's agenda for March 5th.
Commissioner Davis, seconds?
I have it first by Mitchell, second by Davis. All in favor? Second is the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting February 19th, 2025.
This is Commissioner Tupou. I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 19th, 2025.
And how does that work? Where we weren't here last meeting. Can we second that?
Yeah, and it's, we just need this session's approval of those minutes. So if you've reviewed them, you don't have to have been present last meeting to approve in this meeting.
Right. This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second.
I have it first by Commissioner Tupou, second by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is the declaration of abstentions or conflicts, if any of us have any on. Okay. Item 4A. The action requested is Z-2503, a request to add two units and setback relief for the currently zoned PUDR property located at 67 East Prada Picana Lane. We'll turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval to add two units along with an alternate setback plan to the existing PUDR property. The new units are being proposed in the western corner of the property on the north side and are a combined 1733 square feet. The materials used on the exterior of the buildings will be the same and/or very similar to the existing materials so that they blend in. The proposal also includes installing a 576 square foot covered canopy to the amenity area, and that's just south of the existing playground. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is R16 to the north, east, south, and west, and a small area of R3 to the east and R2 to the west. The general planned land use designation is medium-high density, which carries a 7 to 12 dwelling unit per acre ratio. Adding two units would create a total of 12 units, and this is a 10.34 dwelling unit per acre ratio, which is within the general plan allowance. With the proposed units being two-story, Washington City Code 9-8F-7D5 requires the building setback 25 feet from the side boundary line. The applicant is proposing this setback to be 15 feet. Washington City Code 9-8F-7D4 also requires the distance between two-story buildings to be 15 feet, and the applicant is proposing this distance to be 10 feet. Washington City Code 9-8F-7D allows the applicant to ask for an alternate setback plan, which the applicant is proposing at this time. Staff would like to note that if the proposed units were to be attached to the existing two units, the required 25-foot boundary setback would or could be met, and an alternate setback plan would not be needed. Staff prefers this option, attaching the units as it meets the city code requirements. Staff cannot recommend approval to the Planning Commission for the proposal of Z-25-03 for the zone change request, adding two units, and this alternate setback plan, as the setback could be met if the proposed units were to be attached. Staff has provided findings and condition for the Planning Commission to consider in their decision, which will go on to the city council. That concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
This is all one parcel, so they're all, these aren't subdivisions. This is, obviously they're for rent, not for sale. Or is this its own, because they can't connect to someone else's building, right? So they're on the same building lot? Is that correct?
Correct. There is a few different parcels, long-term. The plan is to combine those, which the applicant's willing and wanting to do. My understanding is he's wanting to detach these so he could have the ability to sell those, which he still could do if they were attached, just more of a condo feeling.
How do they have to be attached? I'm just wondering. They have to be, they have to... No, I'm just saying, to connect the two, if they put just like a breezeway in between them?
No.
It has to be actual up to the side. Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering how it had to be.
Yeah, the entire common wall, front to back attachment.
Do you know the reasoning why they don't want to do that, or why?
Resale purposes is my understanding on that, but the applicant's here, he can clarify that.
We'll get to you.
And the road behind it, what exactly is the purpose? Is it just emergency access? Or what is that all about?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. That involved UDOT when they made the connection onto I-15 to maintain access to two existing homes there. They, they put in that access road for those properties so that they wouldn't have to come off of Main Street.
Okay, so that is not owned or managed by the applicant?
The access road?
Yes.
Correct.
Sorry, we don't have the most update, but you've driven up there. If you've driven, there's a paved road all along the back. Just follow my arrow, you know, it comes up through here and ties back into what I have east.
You can see the white lines that outline the boundary of the road right away there behind the parcel?
What? And that little corner piece isn't there either. Is there something there now? I don't, I don't believe so, right?
Yeah, that corner piece, right below your arrow or your cursor.
Right below it.
The dark.
Oh, that's pipe, huh?
Yeah, it's construction stuff.
I was like...
That's what that is. Yeah, those are what UDOT put in.
Is that somebody else's, is that a?
This is a separate, correct?
Private-owned?
I guess they ended up purchasing that.
UDOT does own it?
They own this piece with the pipe on it.
What can they?
They ended up buying everything back here.
Do we, what is that zoned? I mean, because obviously the easiest question is be to ask to buy 10 feet of that to move it over.
It's, it's zoned R16. The piece, the UDOT piece.
We discussed that option with the applicant, and that's a lengthy process, involves disposing of it, goes to the highest bidder, and the applicant was ready to move forward with this plan.
It's, it's kind of an odd-shaped piece of, because of the, of that UDOT piece there. I mean, they own that little triangle. It's going to be hard to put anything on it, isn't it? Looks like it. I mean...
It is an odd shape. No one will be able to really, I don't think, build anything on it. They'll end up selling it to adjoining property owners, so it's either going to be offered over, you know, here to this client or to the person to the south. But that's, UDOT holds on to properties for a while. They're not out.
Do you guys have any other questions for Eldon?
No.
Thanks, Eldon. So this, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and speak on this, you can do so now. We'll have, you're the applicant. We'll have you, we'll have you come up till after, if there's anyone that wants to speak to this.
I'm Bethany McDonald, and I own two of the adjacent lots. The only thing that I would like to clarify to the Planning Commission, this was the original proposal, and it was vetoed. And I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest, I don't remember every reason why. But the original owner did want all 12 units, just like he's got it now. It was not approved, and it went with the lower, and they were all supposed to be purchased, not rentals. And I honestly don't know what ones are in there now that are purchased and which ones were rentals. It was also stipulated that the owner at that time was supposed to live in one of them, and I do not know if that was ever followed through. In order for it to go through, he was supposed to live in it for a period of time, and the rest were supposed to be sold and not rentals. And I cannot say negative about that because since that time, I've turned my two pieces of property into rentals because of the mess on Main Street. So I can't say that I vetoed that they're rentals, but originally that was the situation. And that road has only been put there for my two homes, and it isn't really supposed to be used for access for his development.
Which property is your property? Just out of curiosity?
416 and 446.
Okay.
Okay.
So that road loops all the way around to get to your?
Yeah, because of the fire and everything with UDOT, there was no way access for you to get to my 446 North Main. And so they had to put a road in, in order to make it so that there was access for them to get out, or they would have been coming out onto Main Street, which isn't feasible at all. It's still not feasible the way it is, but it does go out and around and comes in, and the only way into this little area is from, what it'd be, 100 East. There's a little road that goes into the whole development, and that really is, and I think that might be part of the reason why it was vetoed originally, is they were talking about how much more traffic would be coming on to 100 East. But I honestly don't remember. It's been over six years.
All right, thank you. Is there a way to verify?
We'd have to hold a meeting that those were approved in to verify some of what was stated. So I don't, I don't, I don't have any comment on the public comment. Do you guys have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do.
If you'd like to come up, please.
My name's Craig. I'm the owner of that property. We've owned it for quite a while. I bought it in 2009. It was originally an R3, and I couldn't quite hear your concern, so I wasn't quite sure what she said, unfortunately. I had a little bit of ear problem. But we bought it as an R3, and it was 14 units. And then the crash hit, and everybody went away for a very long time, including me. So it was, I bought it approved and was ready to build the 14 units. And then when the crash hit, I went away. Everybody went away. And about, I don't know, five years later, I came back and finally could get funding for it, and zoning had fell to 16. And so I tried to get an R3 passed at that time, and that was met with a whole bunch of opposition from the public. And so we went back and redesigned it into this here, so it wouldn't be, because they were two-story apartment buildings, 14 units. And then, so we went and redesigned it to this and, and had it changed into a PUD in order to satisfy the council. We had to put in that cross gutter to nowhere on, on the city side there, and we had to keep a tree that they wanted to keep. Unfortunately, that tree died a few years back, and the city allowed us to cut it down because it was a safety hazard. So at that time, when we originally proposed this, we would have went for 12 units, but there was a frontage road, that easement that was required. So we couldn't put the other units in that corner at that time. And so we, the max we could really get out of it was 10 units unless I clustered. And I didn't think the public would go for the cluster at the time, so I decided not to cluster and just make twin homes. So we got this project approved and built it about five years ago, maybe a little less. Anyways, in that time, I think it's been a benefit to the city. I think the tax benefit has been real good. I think it's housed 10 families for that time. So I think the city's benefited from it. We certainly have. It helps us with our income and our ability to provide for ourselves instead of the government. So now that the MP11 project has been completed, we now don't any longer have this problem over with the frontage road. So now we can put in two, two more units by density allowance. When we, when the MP11 folk came in, they required that road over on the north side there. So they bought that piece of property from us and that little corner at the top there. And we, at that time, were told it was an access road that could be used by property owners. But when I was doing the stuff with the city during our staff meetings, the, it came up that that road is not accessible. Nobody can use it. So that threw us off on a couple of plans that we had. So at that point in time, you know, I was hoping to purchase the properties from UDOT at some time and utilize them. But I discovered that those properties are not usable. You can't build on them. You can't access them, and there's no way you can do anything on them. So there's, there's no reason for me to pursue any kind of purchase on that. But we would like to build two more units if allowed. And in order, we think that keeping it in a twin home vein would be, you know, the best use of the property. You could certainly add two to the, to the, to existing units there. But when you do that, it impacts not only me financially, but it also impacts your residents because you got to go in and pull out the, the party wall that's in between the existing two units and make it into a two-hour firewall, because it's a one-hour wall, because it's a twin home right now. So there's going to be a lot of impact to not only me, but, but the residents if we do do it as a fourplex. The amended request for the setbacks, I don't think it's going to impact the city in any way, because there's no structure that's going to be able to be built next to it. Even if you didn't have that access road with the setback requirements, I mean, that piece of property is just not usable. So I just don't think there's any impact to the city. It would really help us out if we could build two, two structures there and keep them in, in the twin home. We'd make them look exactly like they're there. You know, the property has been in use for quite a while now, and I think the city has benefited from the property use. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sorry. This is Commissioner Mitchell. So the piece, the triangular piece that we were discussing, have you approached UDOT to see if they would sell that piece to you?
Yeah, but there'd be no reason to buy it. There's nothing you can do with it because the, the road's not accessible. Correct. Once you get the setbacks in there and you can't use the road, there's nothing you can do there. But even if you run my access road through, which I originally wanted to do, I originally wanted to do that, and it was planned that way with Horix, but then they changed and said they had to have it this way for some reason or that or the other. And I ended up agreeing, because, you know, trying to help the city at times when I can. The, even if you put that access road in right there, once you get the setbacks in, there's nothing you can do with it.
This is Commissioner Davis. So just to be clear, the property was yours initially, and then you sold it to UDOT?
Not the side property, just the north piece where the access road goes on. So they built that access road on that north side and around the back. So just the little square and the side square there that UDOT owns now. And I think, I think that's, well, you know, they own the other stuff. But anyways, I sold those two little pieces so they could go around for an access. Originally, Horix was going to run it through, and that's what we wanted. That's what everybody wanted, but for whatever reason, they couldn't do it.
So the issue of the setback has nothing to do with UDOT's purchase?
No.
And I think what you're saying on the UDOT triangle is the setback regime looks at front and rear yards, and if, when you have a triangle-shaped property and you start drawing lines of setbacks from, from lines that are angled instead of straight, you just, nothing will be able to meet setback there either.
You could build some funky triangle structure, you know, that, you know, I guess somebody could, you know, a 700 square foot triangle, you know, somebody wanted to. And, you know, we just feel like the twin home is going to, you know, lend to the aesthetics of the property. We think it's the best use of the property.
Commissioner Tupou, have you considered putting in just a single unit that meets the setbacks of the city?
It's certainly an option. You know, if, if that's, if we're going to say, hey, we can't, the setback is a problem, just a couple of things. One, as a landowner, you know, you would hope that the city would grant exceptions when there was no impact to the city. And two, that whole area up there is zoned R3. I asked Planning, our staff, if I could change it to R3 so I could meet the 10-foot setback, because if it was R3, this isn't a discussion. But they don't want R3 there, which is fine. I understand that. You know, if, I, to be honest with you, I don't understand why it's not R3, because if there's R3 in this, in general plan, and this city needs R3 more than anything, and there's no R3 available, you know, then why wouldn't you put it to be R3? But I don't want to argue the point. They said they don't want it to be R3. You know, can I just do the amended setback and get the full use of the property that I purchased originally as an R3 and, 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 you know, use the property that I purchased to its full extent?
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, and I gather what you're attempting to do, my, my concerns are is what eventually happens to that piece. And it's hard for us to know exactly what might happen. Yeah, UDOT owns it. But I hate to shift the setback and then encroach upon the future owner of that piece that then limits them on what they could attempt to do. I mean, I know you're saying that eventually nothing can happen there. That's just my concern, is by allowing this to happen, we then affect the future use of that piece.
But the general plan is R3 up there. I should be allowed R3 zoning. General plan calls for R3. This, the city needs R3. I'm supplying two more housing, housing units for the city in a, in a zone that is allowed. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that I think would benefit the city tremendously if they would allow me to do it. It's all medium-high density up there.
Part of, part of the applicant's challenge is the parcel he, he wants to submit application on is not zoned R3. It's zoned PUDR. So he, in theory, could propose an amendment to his PUD, carve that section out of the PUD, and then come back and adjust the general plan. The plan is, is recommended and up to an R3 there. He could then redo his zoning application for the one lot. I'm not suggesting he would get it. I'm not suggesting that would be approved. I don't know what the, what the, what would be, what the decision would be. But I think essentially what he's saying is requesting an exception to the rule that he's currently zoned under, because the general plan contemplates greater, greater density than that.
Thank you.
You're in summary?
That's, that's very accurate. Thank you.
I, when I look at it, I, my first thought was, see if you could get 10 feet from the neighbors and slide everything over. You'd have enough on both sides. But where's UDOT? I don't think you can. And I, and looking at it, you're not going to affect anyone behind you. And that triangle piece is, it's, it's kind of junk. No one's going to be able to do anything with it as it is.
Well, it's like I tried to explain earlier. It more than likely will be, I think whoever owns this piece, they're not here tonight. That'd be the prime candidate to probably pick that up.
Yes.
At a time, right? So they could turn that in and split this into two lots, and then, and that's what I think Commissioner Mitchell was trying to point out, is we don't know what's going to come there. But that, that's probably, as I looked for viability of that triangle piece, it's going to be added to this garden area, and it'll become a viable lot at some time.
But where would they access it from?
Well, again, they can probably come and get an access down, down through here.
I thought that road wasn't for access. Isn't that what we just heard?
Yeah, it's not an access. It's not available.
It's private property.
But we, we can't say that right now. You know, you can sit there, and that's what has been given, but that isn't being down the road. The city hasn't worked with carving off a piece that they could get access. That road was built to get to this property, you know, here. Why UDOT went and put it on? Jean, do you have any idea why they wouldn't pay the whole thing? That's what I'd rather hear more than anything, is why that ended up got paid.
The road was installed by UDOT as a private drive to those residences to make sure that they continued to have their access. Originally, originally, there was not to be any access to those homes from Main Street. So that's why.
Sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Why'd they come around the back?
Because that was, that was the only way that we can provide, that they could provide the access.
Well, they were going to have them come all the way around here, and then they ended up popping this open later.
There's a curb cut that was put in that was not originally approved or on the plans. It was a, it's a private drive to access those homes back from our public right away.
But all of a sudden, then the curb cut in, and so that's where they're, you're utilizing that. Okay.
But it is a private, it's meant to be private drive for that property, those properties up there. That's it.
So would it work? Sorry, this is, I'm just thinking, like, if this gentleman was to own those other two pieces, could he then access off of?
If he purchased that, could he then gain access to do something more?
It's a, it's a, it's a private road. It's a, it's a, it's a private road back there and stuff. It would have to be made into, yeah.
But this goes back, so follow with me, John, just talking out loud here. And if this was intentionally made to be a driveway all the way over here from 100 East, then this particular property could use that as an access to this property then. If that's what his intent was, it's not a city road.
The intent was not for that prop, wasn't originally intended for that property, but it's, it's something that we could look at, yes. I wouldn't guarantee anything.
Yeah, the, the reason for it being a private drive is there wasn't enough room or property to build a fully sized public road. And so it's a private drive because it needed to be sized differently than a public road would be. Now, the city didn't have concern because we didn't have a plan for a public road through there anyway. There's probably a mechanism for a future landholder to, to go and, and get the proper documents signed that would access from that private drive to an adjoining piece of property. The private drive's intent wasn't to landlock parcels up there. It was to make sure that nobody ever claimed that it was supposed to be a public road because there wasn't enough room for a public road to be put up there.
I guess, so to help simplify or to settle my brain is if, if he did own those two pieces, could he access them from his current?
So the one piece is?
If he was to gain these two, I'm not saying this is going to happen, I don't know whether it will or won't, but if it did, he then?
So I'll walk with you on your example. If he were to own those two, his best strategy would probably be to amend his PUD and add them to the PUD. Because that private drive is, is decreed within that, that development, right? And so his one lot that's already part of that has a legal right of access from that road. The other two to the west are not part of that approval. And so in theory, they don't have any legal right of access from there. But if he were to amend the PUD, he absolutely could, could extend that to those parcels. And even the triangle one, when you see it as added to the, to the, the parcel to the east of it, even though it's triangle shaped, it becomes more usable when it's connected to something else, right? And so that, that triangular angle isn't quite as punishing in the setback measurements when it's got connection to another parcel there. And so, and so the answer to your question is yes, eventually. If, if he, if he got the right decision to amend the PUD and add those to it, yeah, absolutely.
And to me, not to say that he can convince the property owners that have, but whoever owns that piece of property is going to have a difficult time doing something with it. The ideal would be to sell it to this gentleman and let him.
And, and I think would just, again, carry it out, then we're going to start worrying about fire distance, going back there on a single private road, going back so deep. But that's all speculative, right? We're not there tonight. We're here tonight unfortunately, but I appreciate the thought. I mean, that helps.
So is that, that one lot is landlocked right now? That garden right there?
No, this is part of this home. It just looks like it's.
Snap, snap, bye.
Okay, no, it's.
Yeah, this one's tied to this.
It's part of this lady's home.
So in theory, that land.
Her homes are down here. Homes of these two down here.
Well, that, that upper landlord with the big garden in theory could, could likely establish a, a driveway on that north, north piece there that would satisfy as a flag lot to that back garden if, if there was a goal to split that lot.
We tried, we tried to use that property when we were doing ours, use that road as an access. We were told we couldn't use it.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're using the road. I'm saying you're using that home's driveway.
Right, we were told we couldn't use it.
And you're using that home's driveway.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
So I guess this all comes back to my original thinking. My fear is that by making an amendment, we then affect the future use of the property next door. And that's what I have a problem with.
Well, it wouldn't affect it because we just, they'd be five feet closer.
Yeah, but it potentially could limit them on what they can do with that piece because now you've got the same setback issues, right? Or the same distance between buildings or different.
Doesn't matter.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect them. They would just come in and ask for the same relief to be closer because on that triangle piece, the way I'm seeing is if someone, if we did grant this, they're still going to have to have X amount off, say we let them go 15 off theirs, there's still 30 feet in between the two homes. It's not, it'd be different if he bought it and then if he owned them both, then we'd say, no, you can't have these setbacks because you, you'd have enough room to push them out. That's how I look at it.
Can, can I just bring up the, the, the statement that it's all medium high density up there? And the city needs medium high density zoning? And we're not impeding on medium high density. I understand it's a PUD.
No, we understand that. We understand that you're allowed to have more density on there too, from what, what you're asking for. Problem is, is getting the setbacks that they're not there. That's, that's the issue. That's what we're trying to look at right now.
The question isn't density.
It's not the density. We know you have the density and we're.
Right, but if it was R3 like it's general planned, the 10 foot setback wouldn't be a problem.
I guess another concern that I've got is ideally he can build the two units, he just has to butt them into the existing. And again, I would be fine with that because then you're not encroaching upon the other landowner. He's not to build the two units next to his pre, you know, his two that exist, he then has his four units. They are attached and maybe it is a little bit more expensive to, to get there, but very possible to do.
The challenge with the applicant's position is if it was all R3, he wouldn't have already had 10 units on it, right? And so, so if he wants to assume that it's all R3 and get all R3 setbacks, he's already got more units than he would have got. So now he's telling you, look, it's all PUD, I've got all of those, but I want this one little corner to get R3 setbacks. And it's, it's just not consistent with what he's had. If it were all R3, he wouldn't, wouldn't have that many units.
R3, R3.
R3 would, yeah. R3 be 12 units.
The 12 units on there?
Per acre.
Okay, per acre or, you know, or all the acres?
So it's about an acre of property. So my understanding, and I can be told different, is R3's 12 per acre.
It's not R based on R3 or PUD. It's based on the general plan designation giving it. The 12 is correct, but it's only because medium high density is density between seven to 12 dwelling units per acre. Has nothing to do with R3, nothing to do PUD. It's all based, the density's out of the general plan. Medium high density is seven to 12. That's where the 12, or you know, that's the high point on, on dwelling units per acre is 12. Or the max.
That's why I was confused. You keep saying R3, what does R3 stand for? I know what R16 is.
It's multifamily. That's all R3 is, is multifamily.
But it allows a 10 foot setback on a side yard.
Don't some PUDs allow for tighter setbacks?
If you're one story, you don't have to go to 25 feet. But it's because the way the PUD is written, any two story units on a boundary have to be 25 feet.
Between them?
Anything that's not, if it was zoned PUD on the other side, then you wouldn't. But because it's, because it's straight zoning, that's where it comes in is any boundary, any other zoning around it, you have to be 25 feet in from it.
So it'd be 50 feet between two, two story buildings or 35 between my two story and one story.
Okay, now I see. Now I see what, what the problem is.
Just a reminder on this one, because it does not change your, your decision, it's just a recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One more, please state your name. Ma'am, ma'am, we can't, this is all being recorded. We can't hear you. So point to, and then come and tell us again because we can't, it won't be recorded.
It's irrigation for, for my lots and for Dawn's. And so there's an easement behind my property, the back of my properties, to go down to both my properties for that irrigation. And it also comes down and goes into Dawn's garden spot. And then where Dawn's driveway is, I don't know how much property he owns past his driveway. That's the only access he has to that house. That front part is just a sidewalk to get into the front door. The other is his actual driveway. It's not paved or anything, but that is his actual driveway. And then it goes back to the back of the lot and then, and I don't know where the actual property line is, but I forgot we have to have access to that irrigation.
Irrigation should have, will always have an easement to it, correct? So they can't build on that.
Yeah, so this is Commissioner Mitchell. I think my original concerns, that, that's just what it is, like can't, it's all speculation, but I just fear that if we make the adjustment, then we then affect what the future owner of the other property will be able to do with their piece. That's just kind of where I'm at.
I'm, I'm just worried with all of these adjustments, how many other applicants are going to ask the same thing?
Well, that's why it's, we, I, I, I understand. I feel the same way, but it's kind of their option to come and ask. I mean, you know, that's why we have the planning commissioner here so they can come and ask for this type of stuff because of one offs like this.
How many of these have we approved though in the past couple of years?
How many units?
Setback, setback, setback adjustments.
Back adjustments, yeah.
We haven't done any that are less than the 25 on the boundary. Nobody's requested. That's something, you know, the thing they do request a lot is the in-between number. You know, the one in between the units, a lot of them ask for the relief there that they'll get. The code requires 15. Let me go to, what you can see which, what's here. And then sometimes the council gives a 10 foot, you know, in between buildings, but nobody's ever sought for order relief.
And what, what's he asking for up there? Can you zoom in? Is that 10?
Yeah, 10 in between the two and then 15 on the side.
Now, it, it would be a 10 foot, well, from the front, it looks like there's a bit of a gap, so it'd be seven here at the front point and 10 in the back point. That's what, what it is. Asking for this one too because it's 15 required as well.
I have concern of precedent with this and, you know, candidly, you know, one unit is an overhang. You know, it's, that's just, that is, you know, for something to happen expeditiously, you know, from a construction standpoint, you can do one unit and everything fits.
Or slide it over and butt it into the existing.
Which will be very disruptive to the existing occupants.
Was, was the recreation area required by, for the PUD, that green strip right there? Was it required so that they could?
Yeah, all PUDs have to provide a minimum 200 square feet per unit for recreation and so we usually have them put something in.
It was the tree that caused us to spread it out that far. The city wanted to save the tree. The original plan, I bought an R3 with 14 units when I purchased that property. Pardon me. I originally purchased an R3 zoned property with 14 units. That's what I purchased. When I couldn't get that approved after falling through the financial system of the United States there, we had to include a tree that wasn't part of what I purchased so the city would approve it. So we had to spread those buildings farther than we would have liked to, to accommodate the city at that time.
Was, I'm, I'm not saying that you're, you're not right, but is there, is that stated somewhere the way they tried to keep the tree and that's what caused him to push? And then the tree, now the tree is dead?
I guess it was, I guess, sorry, I did try to.
What difference does that make to me? Because he could, he could have slid it over and gotten enough room for everything.
Yeah, let me just explain to you what, let me explain a little bit about.
But now the tree's dead.
Well, now he can't slide his building.
Right, but if, if he was able to cut that tree down, he would have been able to slide those buildings and get everything.
But that's why I'm, I'm trying, I'm not trying to interrupt, but let me tell you about the tree. It might answer why you think, why, why was the tree? Well, at that time, and Thad may be able to speak to it more, I, I wasn't raised here, but the story was that was one of the oldest trees left in the city at one time. And there were a few council members who grew up in this area, didn't want to see that, that tree, that particular tree was supposed to be X amount of years old. And there were a few people in the council that just did not want to see that tree come down. And so that was part of the deal with them. They'll give you the PUD, but they wanted the tree to stay. And then it ended up dying anyway, but that's, so that, that's why it wasn't just a tree. It was a specific tree that had some meaning to different people in the area is what it came down to.
It was a massive old pecan tree.
What is the distance between the two existing buildings?
Pardon me, what was?
The distance between those two?
The green. Green area? Uh, there's not, that's.
Eight, 30 feet.
Let me go to this one. I can get you close to a dimension between it.
It's 35 feet.
Is it 35? Well.
That's our 25 feet.
But also just keep in mind that it was part of the amenity area required for the PUD. So it wasn't, they had to put the amenity area somewhere and so.
Again, this is Commissioner Davis, if I may go back to what you mentioned earlier. Applicant did want to pursue zoning change. Don't know if it would have been, I guess it's on. Okay, I'll get a little closer. If the applicant did want to pursue zoning change, it would have been, would be approved or not, that's to be determined. But, and then came back, there, there would not be discussion for this. Is that correct?
What do you mean there would not be?
With, with, with respect, it would then, it would then fit within, within the current setback requirement?
I don't know. The challenge with pursuing, so I, I had the hypothetical, which was just trying to understand his R3 comparisons that he kept making. If he, if he wanted to rezone it and take that one little, I want to call it a lot, but it's not really a lot, that, that, that remaining piece that he's proposing on today and, and rezone it to something else, he'd run into some of the challenges he's got with his, the rest of his PUD and, and the nature of that. But, and so, and so there's always a chance to submit a new zoning application and try and work within the zoning regime we've got. And he would have the ability to do that. Do I, do I know if that idea works? I don't know.
Understood.
Can I make a comment? So I would rezone the entire parcel to R3. I wouldn't just try to rezone the, the piece. Once it's zoned to R3, the 10 foot setback is allowed on a two force, two, two story building. If I'm saying that correctly, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong.
So I guess based on that there are alternatives to the, what we're looking at, right? I guess in going through the proper channels, if you wanted to, yeah, take it that direction.
take it that direction?
Yeah, I'll just speak up for that particular on the zoning, yes, that's what you come back, you gotta come back and rezone the whole area with that, then you'd have to come back and get a conditional use permit, because to do multifamily in an R3, and if it's over five units, you gotta then do go through a CUP, that's kind of why we went through this route anyways, I remember, I don't remember the 14 units being already there, I'd have to go back and research that, I do not remember this being an R3 and had it an approved 14-unit complex on it, but to zone this one out by itself would not work, just because that building already existing, that one that it's right next to, you'd have to then have that 15-foot buffer or 25-foot buffer from it over to that, so that, just rezoning that particular area will, just could not, in fact, it'd be a worst-case scenario trying to then put another, we've gone through this with the applicant a lot of scenarios, can't remember how many, but, you know, the best one I think that turned out was to put the building side by side, do it, move on your way and you're done and ready to go, with, I mean, after it, of course, gets approved here, but it meets all the criteria at that point. To go this route, he can come back and go for an R3, there's no guarantee you're gonna get an R3.
If we just imagine that it's just an empty parcel and it was zoned R3, would he have been able to build what exists today?
In an R3, yeah, more than likely would have, because again, it's multifamily, as long as it met all the setbacks and hit the dead-
Well, I'm saying, those setbacks that exist today, would those have, those have been compliant with an R3 zone?
Yeah, they would have. And even, even, even more so, I mean, in fact, they're beyond what the R3 requires. So that's the case, but again, this was a time where, where, you know, previous councils wanted to see what things looked like, and I think that's, that's kind of where we ended up, going this direction, because in an R3, there is no requirement for them to bring elevations, just to show the site, the site plan and how it's laid out, and, you know, the circulation, where the units go, meeting setbacks, and that would be what would be required at the conditional use permit time of the process, to get this particular version of anything, would have to then go through a zone change, then a conditional use permit, which he can still do. But again, nobody's, can't guarantee anybody, any, you know, anything on, on a zone change at any time, so this is technically a zone change, but it's just kind of an amended portion of a zone change for that, that particular twin being added. Does that help, or just muddy your?
If the unit to the, on this duplex that we're looking at here, if the unit to the west was a single-story, or the other side was a two-story, would it still have to have the 25-foot setback?
Okay, now, if it was a single-story, that's all I can answer, you know, what's on the other side of the property?
No, 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 because, because if, one, if it stepped up with the common wall and then it stepped up-
Oh, I see what you're saying, do a-
A single-story on the one side and a two-story on the other side.
That's probably splitting something I really wouldn't want to do, you know-
I've seen them, I've seen-
No, I've seen them built that way.
Built that way, that's why I'm asking.
No, you can build something that way, but I don't think it would meet the intent of, of the, you know, the 15 or the 25-foot setback, I, I, I'm just shooting right from the hip, I'd need more time to look at it, I'm not gonna, you know-
No, I'm just, that was, that's just another option I was wondering.
I mean, it might, but right now, I'm not gonna shoot from the hip and try to, I'd have to go back and research a little bit and see, and then go from there, but my initial thing would say, no, the intent probably isn't met, because it's still a two-story, you know, I'd take the whole thing under consideration as a structure itself, and so-
So generally, the purpose of the planning commission is to verify whether something meets the existing code and standards, and we've spent a lot of time trying to creatively help this one get relief outside of those, because it is just a recommendation tonight, maybe you see if there's a motion that may or may not pass, and then can let the council wrestle with some of that creative stuff if they want.
So what do you guys think, it's up to you?
I mean, I'll make a motion, I think, to me, it's just, there's options to make it work within there and to stay within the code, and knowing that, I guess I'm struggling with the amendment. So my emotion would be to, yeah, recommend denial. And I'm ready to make that motion, but I, you know, if somebody else is for it and wants to make a different motion-
No, candidly, I'm struggling with it as well, it's, it feels as though it's kind of all over the place right now, and if we stay within, you know, what the guidance that we have, then again, I think you can still go back and contemplate the other options, whether it's a single unit, again, I recognize the potential disruption of having it attached. Just one question for you again, the 25-foot setback, which is the requirement, the fundamental purpose of that, just to help me understand exactly why it's 25 feet, and that, because I'm taking that into the specific location that we're talking about.
Yeah, so setbacks are kind of a mainstay of zoning law, there are trends with-
Sir?
There are trends with our state, and I believe other states in the region, where increased density is necessary to accomplish housing, there are trends that look at maybe reducing those or connecting reduced setbacks with certain zoning types or application types, but generally, the concept of setbacks is to create space between your structure, but also kind of defend space between what happens next door, so that you're not able to just build right up to a lot line and leave everybody on the other side of the lot line with whatever you happen to get accomplished on yours, and so it's a, it's a planning concept of just space, there's some, some of the setbacks that end up having, you know, other elements, I'm thinking of awnings that stretch to the boundary line or near it, you know, the, the fire folks would say, like, we're worried about structures that could spread fire from one to another, but in this one, the setback is essentially a concept of the PUD zone that allows for these twin home-type concepts, and then it anticipates that a buyer next door would be able to buy and know that there would, none of those would be more than 25 feet close to their, to their boundary line.
For the clarification, I did it fine, it's just, it's just tied next to it.
I'm kind of struggling with the, with the request as well, it's just hard, I don't want to set a precedent that this would be normal, that we would accept this for all requests coming through, I mean, we're, our job is to kind of see if it's within code, and so we're recommending approval of something that's not within building code.
Make your, I mean, I, I feel, I mean, make your motion, I mean, it really doesn't matter, I mean, the motion needs to be made and we'll vote, so, I mean, we can sit and try to persuade each other, but city council still has the final say. I would just voice our opinion so that the city council knows how we feel about this and hand it off to them.
Yeah, tonight, I'm not gonna say it doesn't matter, but you did a really good job of getting a public hearing, the city council may or may not have one of those, our code doesn't require that it has one, for example, right, so you've got a public hearing, you've got public comment, then your recommendations, and then let the council wrestle with it.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I make a motion to deny this request to change the setback relief for the currently zoned PUD R property located at 67 East Parada? Hakana Lane? Parada? Parada? Lane. And my reasoning, yeah, just causing issues for the potential property owner to the west with the setbacks, part of what others have been just setting a precedent of, you know, the change for others.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
I'm first from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Davis, individual voting Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm going to be a nay, just because I think there's something there here that can be worked out with city council and that way to look at it, I mean, I agree, it's not, it doesn't meet code, and that's what we're trying to do, follow the letter of the law, but I still think that there's something that can be done, so that's just, not just a piece of property sitting there as an empty field, so hopefully the city council can work with him and help him figure out something that he needs, so this will go to city council with the recommendation of denial.
What's really unfortunate about that tree?
The next is item 4B, is zone, a request to rezone approximately 8.3 acres located at 2191 East Washington Dam Road, from the current RA2 zoning to the proposed RA1 zoning designation.
Currently, there is a lot line in this zone that, or there is a lot in this zone that does not meet the two-acre minimum requirement, the RA1 request will bring conformity to the lot size and designated zoning. This particular location has a general planned land use designation of estate, which supports the RA1 zoning designation. Surrounding zoning to this parcel is open space to the north, RA1 to the east, R130, 30 to the south, and RA half to the west. Staff has no concerns with the proposed zone change as outlined, staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of Z-25-04 for the zone change request from RA2 to the proposed RA1, and that is on to city council. That concludes staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You guys have any questions for Ellen? This is the one we tabled last month.
I guess, yeah, maybe you can fill me in on, you talked about how there was an issue making it because of the, maybe go into that a little bit, explain why there was the issue with the current.
So a lot was made through the county, didn't go through the city process, for whatever reason, and they submitted a amended final plat to subdivide or bring that lot into conformity through the city standards, and at that point, the hand was raised and said, hey, this lot doesn't meet the RA2, which is a two-acre minimum requirement, we need to rezone it so it conforms, so we had to backstep to this zone change, which is here in front of you tonight.
Remember also that, that upper, that upper triangular piece has the canal that kind of bifurcates it or bisects it from the rest of the piece, and that had some planning challenges related to it as well, under the, under the then circumstances.
But, but tonight, we're not worried about any of that, we're just changing it from an RA2 to an RA1, so, I mean, they can't, they can't build it, they can't subdivide, I mean, they can't, I mean, they can sell it, but that's about all they can do at this point with the lot lines, but they still probably have to come in and subdivide it to sell it legally.
Yeah, technically, that's what they're gonna do.
Technically, but they'll probably do it the way they did the last, I mean, they won't, but they could, just sell it through the county and-
State law lets you sell it by meets and bounds, but as to the planning laws, it couldn't become a subdivision, right, it would just be a, what we call an illegal subdivision, which is a subdivision of, that didn't follow the, the local jurisdiction subdivision process.
Which a lot of it out there didn't.
Yeah, if we get good at this, let's just keep going, because, you know, Granada Royale to the south, we've got a lot of illegal subdivision work we can do out there.
But where this comes into play is if someone came in for a building permit, we would not, we could say, no, we're not issuing a building permit because you've got a, an illegal lot, you know, scenario, illegal subdivision, illegal lot, whatever the case might have been on this, so it could hold things up for that, and it could hold up future sale if someone came in and a lending institution saw that and it wasn't done right, they could say, I'm not gonna give you, you know, the loan on it, there's all, there's a variety of things, it's better just to clean it up, be done, so.
And the purpose tonight is to tidy it up, in essence.
Available to be able to subdivide, and the whole is, is that they already, you know, this line, and we're not here to, I'm not here to beat up on that, but this line was recorded, this one where my arrow is, there's not two acres down here, there's one point something, so they want to break it off at this point, and so this is just the cleanest way, make it, because it's, you know, minimum two-acre lot right now, we need to make it minimum one-acre lot, then they can get everything then tidied up and finished, so, and it's, so it's just to get the zoning right, the standard of one-acre minimum.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, I will open it up for public comment. All right, I will close the public portion of this public comment, and unless you guys had questions for the applicant or look for a motion.
Commissioner Tupou, I make a motion to recommend approval to the city council on Z-25-04, request to rezone 8.3 acres located at 2191 East Washington Dam Road, from the current RA2 zoning to a RA1 zoning designation, subject to the recommendations and findings of staff report.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
I'm first from Commissioner Tupou, second from Commissioner Davis, individual voting Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well, this will go to city council with the recommendation of approval, and I will look for a motion for adjournment on the planning commission.
Commissioner Mitchell, I motion that we adjourn.
Tupou, I second that.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will start land use shortly.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to the land use authority meeting for March fifth, twenty-twenty-five. We'll look for approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Davis makes a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'm first by Commissioner Davis, the second by Commissioner Tupou. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from the February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five land use authority.
Commissioner Tupou, I make a motion to approve the minutes from February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I'm first by Commissioner Tupou, second by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, declaration of extensions and complex. Does anyone have any?
No.
All right. Item four A, is the preliminary plot approval for the Solente Village One Phase Three Estate Yeah, I can't pronounce those. We'll turn this over to Eldon.
This subdivision is proposing fifty-eight estate lots and one large parcel for the amenity area. The subdivision covers thirty-nine-point-six-nine acres and the zoning designation is PCD. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, south, and west. The amenity area includes an outdoor pool area with spa, shade structures, a storage room, and patio areas, along with a restaurant, pickleball courts, fitness patio, and pavilion. The amenity area includes several parking spaces for the residents and a hard-surface walking path to the pickleball courts and clubhouse. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the pre-plat for the Solente Village One Phase Three Estate lots and La Pareja Club subdivision based on the findings and conditions stated in the report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is the restaurant going to be like for everybody or just those, is it just like a, is it going to be, is it just like?
Craig Coats with Lions Consulting. So this is a gated community, so it's for the residents only.
Okay, so it's like part of their association?
Yeah, so this, this is gonna probably be about half of the estates on this portion. About that many lots are going to be to the east of, there's kind of a main wash that's just to the east on the right of your page there. That kind of breaks it up, but there'll be two gate entrances. One is where the trailhead is, and we've kind of cut the road in right now. Eventually, there'll be a gate there, and there's already a gate on the other side that are, are private for the whole community. So there are public trails that go through it, but there will not be, not be public access. It'll be a private HOA community estate club.
And Commissioner Davis, and just to be clear, so the amenities will service potentially approximately a hundred?
It's about three hundred. There's about a hundred there on this side and another hundred-ish on the other side. So, and, and not saying it won't expand to the north, but as of right now, it's, it's going to be gated on the two ends and then it might go a little bit to the north, but if you look at the whole Solente master plan, as you go west of Solente Parkway, that's going to be more open to the public. They have a higher density to the west. This is more of the estate club areas to the east. And the next phase, they're doing this phase right now, they're trying to get going on the clubhouse, as you can see zoomed up there. That's going to be phase A, they're going to do that with a couple lots and then work their way down to the south. But the next phase, they're not going to do any more east, they're going to go west and do a little higher density to the west off Solente Parkway and kind of work from there and kind of go out both ways as their product goes through.
Okay, thank you. And I do see that apparently the amenities need to be completed before nineteen of the units, so there's a speed bump in there for the amenities to be accelerated, I guess.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
Can you explain your setbacks?
I can explain that we are abiding by all city setback rules and ordinances, and I'm not saying we won't be back to change them. Not me, future homeowner, no, I'm just joking. No.
All right, this is a public hearing. I'll open it up for public hearing. All right, I'll close the public hearing. And if you guys have any other questions for the, or look for a motion on this.
Commissioner Davis, I'll take a shot at the motion. Make a motion that planning commission approve the preliminary plat for the Solente Village One Phase Three Estate lots and La Pareja Club subdivision located approximately four-hundred East Kalima Road.
But we're the land use authority right now.
Can we change that? Apologize. Need to restate?
Just, do you add the findings and conditions? With the, there's, yeah, sorry, there's.
Yes, inclusive of the findings and conditions provided by staff.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Davis, the second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. Item five is an adjournment, right? I think that's it.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I motion that we close or adjourn our meeting.
Second.
I'm first from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Tupou for an adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.